So ladies and gentlemen, it's 5:30. I'd like to thank everybody for being present with us for our board meeting, September 21st, board meeting tonight. We get the meeting called to order. I know there's two of us here physically present. We have the third commissioner is via phone, sitting on the counter. So I didn't want you to think I was just being rude, walking in here, talking on the phone. I was actually calling him to get him connected in. And we'd like to just welcome everybody here today and thank you, everybody, for their presence. We do have an exciting presentation that we get from, to hear from the wildfire defense grants and some different things that are going on. So I'm gonna let Clayton and his team take over when we get to that part of the agenda. Really no other remarks or opening on my part. Do you have any to join?
Yeah, I do.
Then we'll go ahead and open up. I'll lead us with an invocation of following that chief preface. Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Father God, we thank you for just bringing us here safely tonight. We thank you for just a community where we can come together, where we can conserve, and that we can continue to do all that we can to honor you. We just thank you for that. We ask for your wisdom and your guidance in all the decisions that need to be made. We ask you just to be with us, that we conduct business in a way that's pleasing in your sight. And I ask that you be with all the men and women that are protecting us, both here at home and overseas and all throughout our country. God praying for their safety, praying for our nation, praying for our state, and praying for our community. We're just asking you to hold on to us tight. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we will move on through our agenda. Do not have any amendments that are noted. Do you have any that came on last night?
No, sir. I think we're done.
No amendments to the agenda. We do have one item on our consent agenda. It was a consent agenda for the Veterans Hall of Fame proclamation. This proclamation was received earlier this month from our office and states that, whereas since the founding of Georgia in 1733, over a million of its finest citizens have served in the military, including active duty reserves and National Guard. The patriotic men and women of Pickens County have always served to ensure Pickens County, Georgia, and America are defended and protected, whereas Georgia currently has 678,304 living veterans of former service to American military branches. In 2013, Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated was established to honor and induct annually 15 Georgians into the National Premier Military Veterans Hall of Fame. And through 2023, 177 Georgians have been inducted, to include two from Pickens County. And whereas, since establishing an annual ROTC scholarship program in 2020, the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated has awarded $39,000,000 scholarships to Georgia's 39, top 39 senior high school, senior JROTC cadets who are enrolled in the ROTC program at a Georgia four-year university. Whereas, we commend the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame and the 177 inductees and encourage all citizens to educate themselves concerning this effort and get involved in nominating worthy veterans. Therefore, the Chairman and the Commissioners of Pickens County do further recommend and honor this endeavor and these inductees and do hereby proclaim the upcoming date of September, or Saturday, November the 4th, as Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated date. So that was signed and presented to them earlier this month, and wanted to read that into the agenda tonight, into the minutes. With no old business, we will move into new business. This is where we have Mr. Clayton Prepple that's here to do a presentation to discuss the community wildfire defense grants and their activities that they are moving forward with as well. So Clayton, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Is this live?
I didn't know if it's plugged in or not.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just.
We've heard you talk before. I know you can speak loud.
Yeah, let me get this clicker around. There we go. So, thank you, Chris and Commissioners, too, for the opportunity to visit with you. With me today is Anthony English on the end. Anthony, he's with the Georgia Forestry Service, and he's been working with us on to help us develop this grant that we're gonna share with you today. Mike Spivell is here from the mountain as well. Mike is gonna be a key person in helping us implement this plan, this grant, once it's approved. And John Tarantini, who is Vice President of the Wildcat Community and has immersed himself in understanding the ins and outs of this grant, will share the presentation with me. My part will be short, and John's gonna drag you into the meetings briefly to help you understand the scope of what they're about. You know, the picture that we got up there is what we're all about. It's a magnificent view of this mountain and why so many people come to this area. And what we're about is how can we continue to protect that, both in terms of its beauty, but also the investment of many thousands of homes that make up that part of the side of the mountain and the other side of the mountain. And equally important and not well understood probably is what impact would wildfire have on the watershed that comes in and feeds this area and all around us? The Wildcat community is made up of a number of independent communities. Bent Tree being one, Big Canoe, those two make up the largest two. Burnt Mountain Estates, which is, there are two burnt mountain communities up there. And this is Burnt Mountain Estates is part of our group. Monument Falls is on the mountain, is on the Pickens side of the mountain. Sassy Grass is down in the states, is on the other side, and it's mostly in Dawson County. Tate Estates, which everyone knows about Lake Sequoia. Tomahawk, which is down in Dawson County, but is within five miles of our fire station. Wintermont is another community in Dawson that's been part of the Wildcat community from the get-go. Winsong is an extension of Monument Falls, not part of Monument Falls, but comes off of Monument Falls, and it has significance in what we're about. And we've got then a number of independent people who are not part of any one subdivision in our community that are part of our plan. This next chart, just the highlight of this is to say, the Wildcat community comprises over 15,000 acres and over 4,000 homes. Very, very significant. Some 9,000 full-time residents, and we call them empty lots, meaning no houses being built on, some 764 of those. And so, as we'll lay out for you in the discussion of the plan, we've been in contact with two of the, actually more than two, but the two largest communities in terms of this. Chris, we were in Bent Tree the other night, had a great reception from the POA there and the members that were there. And we've been, we're working on getting in front of all the rest of those communities here shortly. So, again, what we're about is how do we protect this very important resource that we've got here, this beautiful mountain area, and the measures that we're gonna take, which we think will have to go a long way towards that. So with that, John, I'll turn this over to you.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking our brief presentation and opening support. The grant itself is a community wildfire defense grant and enables us to create a community wildfire protection plan. Under that plan, it's essentially a mitigation issue for the nine communities that are up there. It's a, you can submit a grant for up to $10 million. More right now at about $3.5 million, and it's probably gonna climb much more than that. Our reception at Bent Tree resulted in over 300 homeowners in one night committed to do this in their homes. We do develop home sites, and we do lots that are undeveloped, but put homes, roads, or infrastructure at risk. Pickens and the Wildcat communities qualify because Pickens is deemed to be an underserved community, and we're a 5.1(c)(3) community up on the mountain. We don't make any money, so. These are the areas we intend to impact, the homes, the home addition zone, and we'll get into specifics. It creates defensible space, which is around 40 feet around the home, for lots that are undeveloped, that put homes at risk and put infrastructure, and we have considerable infrastructure up on the mountain, more than many of the people that live up there know. In fact, it's a destination on Tripadvisor, believe it or not. I took a picture of that, they put in the applications. And we also take care of the right-of-way areas. Now, some of them are as much as 60 feet, but there's also ones like Bent Tree that are 30 feet, and much of their right-of-way is consumed by the asphalt road, very little electric line space. And I'll get into that a little bit. This is the defensible space. I know this is a hard slide to see, but the boxes are really five feet around the home is the first one, and then goes out to 30, and then 150 feet. We're primarily focused on the 30 to 40 feet, and we've dedicated 40 feet of clearing We've already approached a contractor that will do this, is a mitigation specialist that served in Georgia Forestry. He'll do the job in Pickens County at Bent Tree and in Big Canoe. We have another contractor that do the mountain communities. We've met with most, if not all, stakeholders. We're meeting now with the county commissioners, county officials to present the plan and get your support. We've met with the media, both smoke signals in Pickens progress. We have a series of POA meetings scheduled, and we also met with some. Big Canoe, we think we'll get next week, and that's a big chunk of the amount. We looked at mitigating under the power lines. We met with Todd Payne, Manapola. He's looking at options that he may have in Bent Tree about burying some of the lines. And because the way that the 30 feet is structured in Bent Tree, you have to actually get each homeowner to give you easement rights, because there's just not a lot of property room. We drove all 55 miles of Bent Tree, and it just, some roads, we had the opportunity, Little Pine Mountain, Tenmark, we only had a foot right-of-way in some parts of it, so you don't really have room to go through and use the POA to bury. But Todd's looking at his options, and hopefully he'll come back to this one. So we're looking then at clearing all tree fall, brush, any debris from within 40 feet of home. We go up on the roof, we remove the debris, all dry leaves, and we clean the gutters of every home that commits to it. We also look for shingles that are gaps so that they might let embers in, or they are missing shingles. In those cases, we'll just point out to the homeowner that this is an issue you probably need to get fixed. We'll look at the eaves, springs in front of the attic, springs and under the porch, and standing deadfall trees of eight inches or lower in diameter. That's around the home. In the lots, we'll do 65 feet from the road, the 15 feet of the right-of-way, and 50 feet more into it, close to a home, a property attached to a home site, infrastructure Right now, we've dedicated or designated, Bent Tree our number one priority, because the number of residents there, you have 1,100 people living in it, very narrow roads, the power lines are a problem, causing all kinds of outages. And the second priority is Winsong. Believe it or not, Winsong is only 160 acres, and there's only 12 people, 12 homes up there developed, but they are a fire break between the rest of the mountain and Bent Tree. Those 160 acres are parallel to Bent Tree and Monument Falls on either side, and actually connect to Young Life as well. So this is a major fire break. We've also asked for a 68,000 gallon system up on the mountain next to the present fire station tank, that we water, rainwater collection, and six hydrants, dry hydrants, three on either side of the road, either side of the present hydrant. But what it does do, it brings a water source to two communities, both Monument Falls and Sassy Grass Estates. We had Philip Dean, the Director of Utilities, he did the study for us, so he engineered it so that we know what we're getting with this. We were purchasing some commercial blowers and chippers and so forth, but we're placing these chippers down in Bent Tree where there's more need than the other ones, and if the other communities need it, we'll share it. This is a, if you will, a mutual aid agreement between nine communities that have a single purpose. We're gonna remove 88 miles of pine straw in Big Canoe and replace it with mulch. $325,000 project. Because pine straw is flammable, and we've heard that you can treat it as retardant, but we know that it's not effective. Mulch is a better solution. With that, going to the POA and ask for covenant changes, POA will set the example, and hopefully within two years, we can to a transition to the residence lots and replace their mulch. Station 10, we've, under a separate grant, we've asked for a brush truck and extension to the station. I don't have any to do with this grant, but the answers are perfect, how your capabilities This slide is dedicated to explain the detail, which I really have done already, about the, what we're willing to do. Before we start on a home assessment, we do the first one in the first year or second year. We do the work, and then we come back in the fourth and fifth year and do another one, because we wanna make sure it's sustainable, that the work we do at these homes are sustained over the long term. We don't wanna do a flash change and then let it go away. We're trying to get this to continue going forward. And, you know, we have my age population up there, so we, you know, we don't go up on matters like we used to, and we don't clean that gutters like we used to. Probably important to have someone do that for us. My wife's gonna show you. The next slide gives you the goals. My community, I know it's hard to see. We have 4,100 homes up there. This mitigation process over five years mitigates 4,800 acres of the 15,000 acres we have, approximately 30%. When you take into consideration that Big Canoe has 2,000 acres of green space, or really 30%, or a little bit higher than 30% in mitigating, and that, I think we're gonna grow beyond that. We had 300 people sign up in the first couple days. My suspicion, and we had them a month before we submit this, we're gonna probably be growing in about 800 to 900 more lots, more homes. We're gonna, right now, we're planning to mitigate 1,200 homes in our plan and 133 lots. Those 133 lots represent 1,600 acres. These are, some people have 40 acre lots up there, 30 acre lots. Why is this important? When I had a meeting with Manapola Liquid, I brought the lawsuit from PG&E in Northern California, the lawsuit from Southern California with me, from Paradise, California, in what will be the lawsuit in Hawaii. The damages to PG&E with the people that sued them is $55 billion. They had to pay the insurance company $11 million to do nothing in that option. You know, we talked about when do you shut the fire off, when you want, no one wants to do that kind of stuff, but they don't do it until there's a fire, and then all of a sudden, everybody's anxious to comply. We talked about high winds, the power lines. We will at least mitigate hazardous fuels below the power lines. And part of the problem with the above ground, there's only, there's 21 holes on the monument that the whole 55 miles of the power line, and they're arched over, the trees are arched over the power line, so when they fall, so does the power line. We have limited water supply. We looked at a alert signal, and it doesn't seem to be the right option, given the maintenance of them, and we have a code red, and Dawson has a swift 911. It's pretty effective. I mean, every time we have something coming my way, I get 10 phone calls on different devices, so it does get me up to answer the call. And we have poor water pressure. The water pressure that we do have is all fed by gravity. The grant requests are based on projected acceptance of this program, and I think that's gonna be widespread. We have a link on our website that allows a property owner to press the button, and they can automatically sign up. We'll prioritize by subdivision, and then get the work started once the grant is approved. My understanding is that it has to be in by October 31st. By the time they go through their evaluation process, we're looking at a February approval time, so relatively short compared to what it takes to do it. Anyway, that's it, and I hope that we can get your support on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for preventing that. One, as a resident that lives in the area, I can make it 301, so I'll go on your website and get that.
One, which remains.
And I think the recent tornadoes with the trees that are following and things, I think we've got more downed trees there than have been in a long time. I don't know that people realize how much of that area was actually affected by the two tornadoes earlier this summer, but a significant amount of downed trees and a lot that blew through there. In addition to me personally signing up for an assessment, I would like to ask if we get a motion to allow me, as chairman, to send an endorsement letter of support to go along with their application on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, if I could open up the floor for a motion for that.
So moved.
I'll say a motion.
I have a move and a second. Any discussion or questions on that?
I just had a couple of questions. It's, supporters of Home Joining is volunteer, right? It's not like it's.
The partnership?
Yeah.
This is volunteer.
Okay. And how often are you wanting to go through and do all the cleaning up, the cleaning up stuff at people's homes? In an optimal world, how often would it occur? Like yearly, every two, three years?
No, this will be about one all the same.
But then, once it comes back, and stuff, like the leaves cleaning up on the roof and stuff, that kind of thing?
Well, looking back in three or four years, it sets, and at that time, you'll determine whether, how much they've committed to the project. So if it looks like they did nothing, then we'll ask them, we need to request them to do it. And the mitigation company we use has the ability to do that. It just won't be free after the second assessment.
Okay.
The first assessment takes care of everything. We expect, I mean, we're starting small. We only have like 50 homes and 13 lots the first year, but we know it's gonna take six months to ramp up, sign the contracts, get all the liability commitments and insurance out of the way, but second, third, and fourth, we're going 200 lots a year. And I think it's gonna increase.
Commissioner, I would hope that when people see how good it looks.
They'll continue it themselves.
They'll continue it themselves. I think right now, a lot of them look at it, and it's just overwhelming, you know? Where do I start? How do I finish? And so that's what we're hopeful of.
I might be one of them.
We met with Scott, with Scott Erro from Pickenoe and Jim Pryor, and their boards are on board for this thing. We're not gonna have an issue with them wanting to do this. Their concern is they can't believe it's free, so they wanna make sure we don't cut down a lot of trees, and we're not into that.
But you mentioned Young Life, too. Are they thinking about joining this as well, or are they not, just out of curiosity?
Or who?
Young Life.
No, they're not part of our community.
Okay.
And we're concerned, because they're really outside of our area, they're further on down, they're catching the properties, but barely at the property line. They're more Bent Tree-ish than they are the rest of the mountain.
Okay.
But we've, we're probably gonna get applicants from outside of our community, which is an interesting development.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. All that work, that sounds fantastic. It's a lot of work in that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a full-time job.
So any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Tippins, I know I can't look at you, so I'm looking at the phone as if you're gonna respond.
Yeah, so I was listening really close, trying to, I follow my head, but is the grant 100% funded, or would there require a accounting input to it as well?
It's 100% funded. They ask for matching funds, but we meet the grant, we.
It does not require the matching.
Right.
Were you able to hear that, John?
Hey, I was. I wanna see, me and you guys do, that sounds like you put a lot of legwork and research into doing that and getting programs set up, so I'm looking forward to seeing some positive outcome from it.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call and vote all in favor to support getting a letter of support. Aye.
Aye.
We will get that prepared, and I'll get all the information from you, and we will make sure we get it regular. But thank y'all. One, for what you're doing, two, for coming here tonight and making the presentation. We originally had this on a work session agenda, and because when we approve minutes, in a minute you'll see, we've had enough meetings to last us a lifetime this month alone, so we didn't even have a work session tonight, so we wanted to make that a part of the regular voting meeting. But thank you, Ken, for that.
Very much. Thank you.
We'll move on. Next item on the agenda is, we did receive a letter, an annexation request from the City of Jasper, basically asking us to look and see if there were any oppositions to an annexation. The annexation's for parcel 029B061. It's a 17.28 acre tract located off of Jeanette Drive in Jasper. The zoning requested with this annexation is R2 residential. They have their public meeting scheduled for the 26th, and our deadline for trying to get any kind of response, we have a 30-day period to jack door to go ahead and get it on our agenda. In review of the zoning and ordinance map, it's surrounded by R2 City of Jasper property. This was just one piece that was never annexed in, the rest of it was. The roads right in that area are all maintained by the City of Jasper already. So we bring that forward just to ask, do we have support for approval of the annexation request from the City of Jasper?
Can I make a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I'll make a motion.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
You got a second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? I know this one kinda got added into the folder instantly after we received it, so.
That's my main concern, is that we often maintain that road after we do that, so.
Yeah, it all connects to where they are to maintain. All right, well, with no other questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll let them know we have no objections. Get that forward. Thank you. Next item under our action item is approval of minutes. As I said before, we have four different sets of minutes from the month of September, and it's only the 21st. We could call two or three more problems before we get this thing out of the way, but we had our original work session and regular meeting on September the 7th, our Parks and Rec Board meeting, that we did a joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, where the full Board of Commissioners was present as well. And then we have the minutes for our call meeting on September the 14th to approve the 2023 military. So we do have all four sets of minutes. I know that it's been provided to each member of the Board. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those, and if so, do I have a motion that we approve all four? all four sets of minutes?
Assumed.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. With that, we'll move on into our rezones. We have two tonight that have came before us. The first item under our rezones is R Z one-nine-zero-five-twenty-four, rezone request, which is from Mr. Brian Armour. It's on Pin Hook Road, a request to move from highway business to rural residential on a point-six-six-three acre tract of parcel zero-three-seven-zero-two-zero-zero-one. The Planning and Development Office received a completed application back in June the twenty-seventh, from Mr. Armour requesting this change of land use classification. It's located at one-eighty-four Pin Hook Road, Ranger, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, is to combine the tract with the adjoining nine and a half acres to allow for better, better access to the property, essentially splitting from highway business to the rural residential side of that parcel. Regarding the application, the Pickens County Planning Commission met on August the fourteenth and voted for yes, zero, no to approve the rezone request with their recommendation coming forward. So with that, do I have a motion to uphold the request from the Planning Commission to approve?
Assumed.
Second.
A move and a second. Any discussion or questions on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I have a motion, gears. The second rezone request that we had was from Mr. Steve Holt, R Z one-nine-zero-five-two-nine, for a tract of land on Hidden Cove Drive, moving from agricultural to small agricultural. It's an eleven point four-seven acre tract, parcel zero-six-seven-zero-five-two-zero-one-two. Received a completed application in our Planning and Development Office back on June the twenty-eighth, from Mr. Holt, requesting the change from ag to small ag on that eleven point four-seven acre tract. The intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, is to split off five acres to sell to an adjoining property owner. A public hearing was conducted on the fourteenth of August, and from that, the Planning Commission voted for yes, zero, no to approve the rezone request as presented. With that, do I have a motion to follow the request of the Planning Commission?
Assumed.
Second.
A move and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, both of those are through. So it brings us to our guest comments portion of the meeting. I'll open up the floor to anybody that has any guest comments. This is a first. Hey, Mr. Dobbs, I was, I was convinced Curtis had something for us. Yes, sir, I want.
I want to echo what the commissioners that conveyed to you gentlemen. The foresight, the vision, and the groundwork to do what you're doing for this community is fantastic. Thank you.
Very much, very much, I do that. Any other comments?
Yes.
If y'all are going to take it easy on us, then at this time, I would like to enter into a motion that we go into executive session to consult with legal counsel pending potential litigation. Let the entertaining motion that we go into executive session.
Assumed.
Second.
All right, I have a move and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, at this time, we will go into, you're welcome today, I'm back, I'm back out here in the second.